Township Planning Commission for March 22, 2023 with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a quick note before we get started, Cindy would suggest we all speak into our microphones because it makes it very difficult for Sue to make a record. And anybody in the audience needs to come to the podium, so we got that out of the way. With that, I'm going to say roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Here.
Mark Bouchard?
Here.
Christopher Daggy?
Present.
Chris Hultunin?
Here.
Christine Holcomb?
Here.
Tom Cozel?
Here.
Robert Musling here. Robert Jacobs?
Oh, excuse me, absent, I'm sorry.
And Kathy Schweikart?
Here, thank you. Item number four is approval slash amendments to the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs is absent. And Kathy Schweikart?
Yes, thank you. Item number five, approval of minutes, the minutes for January 25, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 25, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Was that Tom?
Uh, Tom and me, yeah.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Absent.
Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs absent. And Kathy Schweikart?
Yes, thank you. Next, I want to ask Chris Hultunin if I said that right?
No.
To please read the rules for public comments and public hearing comments, please.
Public comment rules, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Individuals wishing to speak have time limits, three minutes for each member of the general public and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, for example subdivision association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign-in sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Number four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Number five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. And number six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
The first public hearing is regards to 1721 North Channel as a special land use public hearing. I will open the public hearing at 7:08. Is the, Steve, do you, or Karen, excuse me, sorry, Karen.
So we did the review for the special approval land use for 1721 North Channel Drive. The applicant is proposing to establish a coffee and sandwich shop at an existing structure and provide parking and drive-through service for customers. Section 24-6, restaurant, carryout, fast food, or drive-in standards apply to the special land use. There's a number of criteria, some of which the applicant meant, but some others that the applicant will need to confirm. I'll go over the items that the applicant, we still need more information from the applicant. Sorry. Devices for the transmit, or on page number, it's the third page of the review. Item number 10, devices for the transmission or broadcasting of voices or music shall be so directed or muffled as to prevent said sound or music from being audible beyond the boundaries of the site. The applicant will need to ensure that the standard will be met. Item number 11, drive-in establishments, drive-in establishment management shall provide adequate trash and litter policing for the parking lot and the shoulders of the adjacent roadways. These areas shall be completely cleared of accumulated debris as often as necessary. The applicant will need to ensure that this standard is met. Item number 12, during the period for when a drive-in restaurant, fast food restaurant, or carryout restaurant is vacant, closed, or otherwise not open for business for more than 30 consecutive days, the owner, franchise owner, or lessy shall be subject to complying with the following regulations. Subitems A, B, and C will need to be met by the applicant. Other than that, based on the preceding review, I recommended approval upon the applicant being able to confirm the outstanding items.
Thank you. Is the applicant here or representative? Would you please come to the podium, state your name, please?
Good evening, my name is Herb Blackstock, I'm the architect working with the owner. As far as items 10, 11, and 12, the owner agrees to those. They've already responded back to the township, I don't remember the representative, via email, stating that they've, they agree to all of that. There'll be trash receptacles placed along the site. It's primarily going to be a drive-through service, but of course, they're going to maintain their site. They don't want it to look trashy. So they'll, they'll maintain the trash. In terms of blocking the site, if, if for some reason, if it's seasonal, or if business does not meet those, you know, what they anticipate, obviously, they'll agree to those, you know, blocking the site. It's not a problem, but at this point, they plan on it being a year-round establishment, somewhat normal business hours. As far as I know, there's no plans to have music blasting outside or anything like that. So they agree to all of those and will meet those requirements.
Okay. I see we have a new site plan in front of us tonight. Is that an updated one?
No, there were no changes.
Okay, there were no changes.
The only changes that there, or the only change is to the existing building. It's an existing bank. It already has an existing drive-through. On the exterior, there'll be some updates, painting probably, and any repairs that need to be done. They're going to change the window. Right now, it's a banking window, which doesn't allow for food passage, that'll change. And then we're adding the required dumpster enclosure. Other than that, the site's going to remain, you know, other than repairs or up, you know, improvements to landscaping and things. But that site plan should have been what was issued to you originally back in January, I think.
This one's December 2. Okay, thank you.
One quick question.
Red hat.
Lighting, I didn't, is there going to be any additional lighting or changes within the lighting?
We're not proposing any, to any changes at this point to what is already there. They'll have to inspect the light fixtures that are there and make sure that they're operational, but we're not proposing to put any additional lighting on the site, on the exterior of the building. The interior, obviously, is going to be renovated for a food service from a bank, or right now, it's currently an office. So most of the work, you know, there'll be new lighting on the interior, but that won't have any impact on surrounding neighbors or anything.
Has there been any review on the private waste system?
In terms of the-
Adequacy, it has been sitting vacant, well, almost vacant for a long time.
I think, yeah, someone was using it as an office, I'm not sure when they moved out of it. Yeah. We can have that looked at as part of our-
I know that one of the questions for the department is, was connected to city suing, it's adequate, but there's nothing in there about private.
Oh, no, it's-
Curious if it's adequate for that.
It's city water, but it's set to-
Septic or private waste, right.
Septic, correct. And that's why it's primarily just a coffee and sandwich, not a dine-in, full-service restaurant.
But no, no review's been performed on that.
Not at this point.
So if there wasn't-
No, but we can handle that through the building inspection, or the issuing building permits.
Through the St. Clair County Health Department.
Any other questions at the moment?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience who wants to come in regards to this public hearing for this particular project, has any comments, wants to come forward, state your name, address? I see nobody coming forward or raising their hands. Okay. I will close the public hearing at 7:13. Board members?
I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for 1721 North Channel Drive. Upon the applicant being able to confirm, the outstanding standards will be met. Support.
Do you want to enumerate those outstanding, like 10, 11, 12?
Yeah, the, I think it's-
I think it's 10, 11, and 12.
Nine.
Nine?
Ten, eleven, and twelve. Nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
So we have a motion, support. Any discussion? Sue, you okay?
Clean as a whistle.
All right. Roll call, please.
That was Tom and then Mark.
It was Tom and Mark.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes. Bob Jacobs is absent. And Kathy Schweikart?
Yes. All set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We need to stand up and give you a copy, I believe, if that's what we're still doing, correct? See, I hired Karen. Give us one minute, okay?
Is there three copies?
There's only two.
Don't we need three?
See, do we need two or three? We used to always have three.
Yeah, I don't know if it was changed or not, I mean, it should be three.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
One stays, or one goes to the applicant.
And one, I thought went to the clerk's office and one went to the planning board.
So we can at least give them theirs for tonight, and then say they need an extra one in the township, we can make that happen. Does that make sense?
Providing another copy? Yeah, you can keep that copy if you want, I can drop another one off. I, I live in the area, so it's not-
It's up to you. How about we do this, we'll at least give you a signed copy, and you take that with you, and then would you please provide another copy to the building department, and we'll handle what we need to do with that, okay?
No, this one's December, that one's October.
This one's December 2. This is going to be December.
Matcha front sheet.
Matcha sheet.
The same ones, just folded. Matcha front, matcha front that was folded in.
Very good. Yeah, it's the same though. I think, no.
Yeah.
Architectural. Okay. 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 I got what you're saying, man. Today's is 22nd.
If I could have you sign, please? Where says applicant? You really have to sign one more, so you can keep that one. Where is that applicant?
Did I sign it?
You signed it where it says secretary.
No, Robert did.
I did.
This is Cardinal, isn't it?
Oh, that's you, okay.
Cardinal.
I'll give you that one. Sorry.
Give me your glasses.
I have mine, so I'm like, thank you very much. If you dropped the other one off, it'd be great.
Yeah, I'll get it to you about this week next week.
All right, thanks. Okay, that comes back to Robert. Okay, the next item for public hearing is a public hearing for rezoning on 6603 Dyke Road. I will open the public hearing at 7:20. And that will be Steve, right?
Good evening. The request tonight is, in front of you is for 6603 Dyke Road. It's located in the corner of Dyke and Cardinal Road, Southwest corner. It's 0.177 acres. They're proposing a rezoning from small business to general business. The property has been used for a number of years, it's, it's unoccupied now, but it was an office retail building, Colony Clinic, and they're on tennis to rezone the property to C3, which would give them a wider range of types of uses. They didn't specify in their application, but I had heard and not verifying, may want to verify with them, it's going to be some retail and water-related activities because of the canal. When we look at recommending on the rezonings, we typically look at the master plan and also the compatibility of the area or consistency with the area. In terms of the area, the requested zoning is consistent with a three, C3 zoning on the east across the street, and furthermore, the waterfront recreational uses being anticipated are consistent with that area. And also, although the master plan is listed as residential transitional, in that area there are a number of commercial uses shown on the master plan, so we have no objection to the rezoning as requested.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present and wishing to come forward and address this? Sure. Come to the podium, state your name, address, please.
I'm Jared Irwin, and I live in, at 9418 Stone Road here in Clay Township. And we are, I'm connected with the Freedom Boat Club is my background, and we have a location here locally at the Elginak Harbor Club as well, where we have 10 boats. And it's not, we're not looking at, at the place for Freedom Boat Club at all, but just general, you know, to help families, children, kids experience the water in various ways. And C2 zoning of that building currently did not allow us to do anything with regard to getting families and kids out on the water. We're connected with a captain network, and so there's just a, a basic need for us to be rezoned to C3 to invite the ability to do business like that for the community.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any questions at the moment?
What, what's your intent for that piece of property? You have to have some sort of intent for it, right?
Yeah, so there's just a, kind of a, the living quarters upstairs allows us to maybe offer that as a rental for families or fishermen to come and use. It, we're, we would have to do some updates to the building and create the separate entrance, but something like that. And then our Lake LLC is a, a business that is, you know, a philanthropic business focused on Lake St. Clair and its sustainability practices, so we want to host them and allow them to offer their apparel there, as well as just a general means of maybe, you know, a boat rental type of deal, or a captained outing with our certified U.S. Coast Guard captains that we have, vessel education training, and really just a nautical theme for the building and the property at large, and various, you know, kind of educate boater safety, you know, educational events and stuff. We've already kind of started this at, in other areas around the lake and Harrison Township, and so we have the ability to just practice it at home here in Clay Township, and we think that this is a huge boating community out here, and we are really wanting to keep people safe and allow them to experience the uniqueness of what Lake St. Clair has to offer, and specifically the Lake St. Clair flats in Clay Township.
Okay.
Got some questions? You have a site plan developed at this point, and what plans are you doing?
So we really don't have immediate plans to affect the site too much, exterior, more just like internal renovations and maybe some signage on the existing building. But the, the plan right now, immediate plan, is to just focus on, you know, renovating the building to a point that it can be attractive and inviting for the community.
But do you have a site plan or is it to do the renovation?
A, a site plan to do the renovations.
A site plan to know what you're going to be putting in there and to know parking and-
Can I see this? Let me read the last paragraph of Steve's review. It says, he did say, "I recommend approval of requested zoning from C3, C2 to C3. However, I am concerned about the potential impacts on the seller's residential property. If the property is rezoned, again, if the property is rezoned, the applicant will be required to apply for a site plan slash special land use approval. At that time, the planning commission should require the installation of the appropriated, appropriate landscaping barriers or other measures designed to mitigate any potential nuisances." So right now, we're considering a rezoning, is what we're here for the public hearing for.
Correct, but once it's changed?
Then-
Then it's changed forever. It's supposed to tie the-
But then they have to come-
They have to meet certain standards.
Of course, of course they would, but-
Yeah, I mean, we would have to basically change the idea of the entire business that we want to do in there if this does not get approved, right? So the first initial step was just to be able to rezone that first parcel that would invite the ability to try and get these types of businesses going.
You're only doing the one parcel, and you own three there, so it's just the one parcel.
Right. All the people involved, if I can say, we all have day jobs, so we're, this is just an initial step we're taking that we know if it, if it doesn't get approved for this kind of a use, even the first parcel, we know that we have to, you know, recreate an entire strategy for the investment made here. And so we're just kind of focused on where the, the business would actually start and be able to be done.
So the business wouldn't be able to extend over those other two lots unless you came back and changed the zoning on those two lots?
And we, we knew that from the start, right? And so basically, we're hoping to be able to rezone the parcel that we can actually start the businesses in, and then see if those businesses are invited and successful here, and then can scale. And from there, we would make plans to, you know, take the necessary action to, for the next parcels, if we needed rezoning or special use case applications. We're absolutely, you know, willing to comply with all of that. This is just a more of a, hopefully, we can get this rezoned so we can continue down this path of the idea we have to bring to what we're going to call the Lake St. Clair headquarters. Hopefully.
Steve, the, it, the, his two entrances and the egress and entrance, there's one off M29 and Cardinal. We've been in this area eliminating him off of, like, the, the bird lanes, like Cardinal and stuff, so he can only come in off M29. Is that something that would be handled at that time, like you're saying, or is that something?
No, that would definitely be handled at site plan review time, not at the rezoning time.
Okay.
Remember, every zoner just looks into the issue, not the signed property.
Got it.
You have the questions from the board members?
So it is understood that if this is rezoned, because that's what we're doing here tonight, that you would have to come back with a site plan for the business that you're proposing to put in there, correct? You understand that, right?
Oh, yeah, correct, absolutely. Yeah. That's, that's what I was hoping to kind of understand is, for, I'm new to this as well, you know, kind of young, so just kind of taking the process as, as I get consulted to as well, and that was kind of the, the most immediate thing that we could apply to do, to see if it's, if we should even consider this spot as something to, to do the types of business that we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question for Steve, if that's okay?
Sure.
If they had a site plan, could they do the site plan, tie the zoning right to the site plan, submit the site plan and say it's subject to making the zoning change, subject to the site plan?
That would be conditional zoning, and the township, the planning commission cannot ask that. It has to be voluntarily offered ahead of time by the applicant, according to state enabling legislation.
Right.
So you can't condition it.
Any other board questions, comments at the moment? Well, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to any members of the public who have any comments in regards to this public hearing, to please come forward and state your name and address. Thank you very much. You just have to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Dave Green. My address is 6607. I actually own the property next door to where we're talking about. I'm concerned, the rezoning, are we just talking about rezoning the one lot? Or is it all three together? One, just the one?
Just where, just the one at this point.
Okay. My next concern would be if that's being rezoned, and if I understood the gentleman right, they're making that retail, where's the parking then?
Right, now we haven't addressed that. It's just for rezoning of, from C2 to C3, I believe, is what we're doing.
Yep.
Can I respond for a second?
Sure, go right ahead.
So, in the building industry, a lot of times, so for them to go in and have plans drawn up to, for a site plan and to, even if they wanted to change the building to do any parking, it, it isn't necessarily a small dollar amount. So if they don't get the zoning change, then if they went and did all the paperwork and spent the money, and they couldn't get the zoning change, now they just spent the money without having the ability to do so. So all this does is, it gives them the ability to kind of say, okay, go ahead, you can start working towards what you want to work at, but they still have to submit more paperwork to the township to make sure that they're following within the regulations that the township has set up for that zoning.
Okay.
So they, they'll have to meet all the parking requirements and everything for that particular zoning once they're in it.
So if I understand you correctly, then if they turn, if they get the rezoning and then it turns into a retail shop, and they decide they're going to pave the, the two vacant lots, let's say for parking, that has to be presented later?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's got to have all the right drainage and green space and everything else, too.
Okay, well, that was going to be my next question then. I mean, is that, is there some kind of a buffer between?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the next phase, if we get to that phase, if we get past this phase.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for making your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience on this particular public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing at 7:33. Board members?
I'd motion to approve the rezoning on 6603 Dyke Road from C2 to C3.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, could I request that the maker of the motion rephrase that to recommend rezoning to the township?
I would recommend rezoning to the township board for-
We appreciate that.
6603 Dyke Road.
I can see the attorney in the back here is laughing at us, too, so.
I still support.
Sue, do you have the motion? Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? Roll call, please, thank you, Steve.
I'm working on it.
No, no, we'll give, give Robert a moment here.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Eltonin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling?
Yes.
Robert Jacobs is absent. And Kathy Schweckert?
Yes. All right, yes, it is. Thank you for everybody's comments in regards to that public hearing. We're going to move on to the next one, which is a public hearing in regards to Corcat SALU residential unit. This is in regards to the unit. And I will open the public hearing at 7:34. And this is Steve.
The zoning ordinance specifies that an individual can request a, under special ad, you have a residential unit in a commercial district. And so, it allows you to approve that, especially in places like many warehouses and that, so sometimes want a manager on site. The petitioner is requesting a second residential facility. And he proceeded to the zoning board of appeals and they granted that variance. So, he's here tonight to fulfill the requirements of gaining approval by asking for special land use approval. It meets the ordinance consistent to the ZBA granting the variance. Now, this is totally different request than what's going to be coming to you in the next one, the expansion of the storage facility.
This is just in regards to the apartment?
This is just in regard to the apartment, this action.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Is the applicant here or representative would like to come forward? I state your name.
My name is Paul Muscat. I'm the owner of Corcat Storage. We're requesting the second unit be approved. We've met all the requirements and we feel like it meets the needs of the township.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Is this just a general rental unit or is this going to be for an employee that's also going to be serving your business?
General rental unit.
Is the other unit that's in the building now, is that also a general rental unit?
That's occupied for the employee.
For the employee, so this will just be a, this is a general rental unit?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
Any other board questions?
Someone living in there now, in the apartment?
The existing apartment?
Yeah.
Yes, my onsite manager lives there.
Okay, so I thought, all right.
Well, thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, anybody in regards to this particular item wants to come forward and make comment, please do so, please state your name.
Good evening, I'm Gary Yonernolak, attorney. I'm not sure if your board knows this or not, but on behalf of some of the neighbors, I filed an appeal in the St. Clair County Circuit Court that's pending as to the ZBA granting the variances on this parcel. There was two parcels, they were combined, and then they went to the ZBA as to three variances that were granted back on January 18th of this year. I filed the ZBA appeal because the zoning enabling act says that an aggrieved party can file an action, so it's now pending, excuse me, before Judge West. It's case number 2023-254AA. Chris Anderson is the township attorney, she's filed an answer or an appearance in that case. So, I would just suggest to you that you not take any action on this because that case is still pending. And Judge West has the discretionary authority under the zoning enabling act to reverse and set aside the variances, affirm them or remand it back to the ZBA for future proceedings. So, if your group take any action, it kind of puts part of it in jeopardy from the property owner's perspective because they could do something and the judge could reverse what the ZBA did. And without the variance, I don't think the planning commission can approve this site plan just as to that apartment because your ordinance says you can generally, I think as Steve said, you can have one unit, but the second unit was part of the ZBA variance process. One was with reference to the second unit. One variance request was the lot coverage. And the third one was with reference to your zoning ordinance says that the mini storage has to be 50 feet off the property line if it abuts residential, which it clearly does. And the ZBA granted them a 40-foot variance so that the proposed building would be 10 feet off my client's property line, which is kind of an extreme variance. So, I would just suggest to you that you not take any action, that you can continue the public hearing until that circuit court case is resolved. And if you had any questions, I'd try to answer them.
I have a question. So, are all three variances being challenged in court then?
Correct, because it's all one package. So, the judge can make a multitude of different decisions.
Weren't they three separate variances though? Because that's what we have in our packet, three separate variances for three separate items.
Correct. And there's three separate irons in the circuit court case.
Okay.
Okay, since you're speaking about this right now, I think we all had received maybe late the communication from Christine Anderson, our township attorney. And I'm just going to read it really quick. It started out with a question from Cindy Babish about whether this matter could even be placed on this board's agenda for tonight. And this is Christine Anderson's reply. Well, maybe I should start with the question. Cindy Babish was questioning whether it could be put on our agenda for tonight. She was under the impression they had projects that are on hold when there is, when they are involved in a ZBA decision is challenged, which this one is being challenged. Christine's response is that is true if the appeal is to the ZBA rather than the circuit court. This is appealed to the circuit court in front of Judge West. From a decision of township administrative official, Corcat Mini Storage can certainly proceed with their development while the ZBA appeal proceeds through the circuit court process, such as at their own risk. However, as Judge West may side with the appellant and vacate the variances granted by the ZBA. If you have any questions, give her a call. So, I was just following up with what you just said.
Right, and that's consistent with what I said. Chris and I have had a few phone conversations.
Sure. All right, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Any other members in the audience like to come forward on, I'm going to say, the apartment? I see no one coming forward. I will close, well. Steve, do you have any suggestions after your just hearing what we just heard?
I spoke with Christine Anderson today. And again, she reiterated that if we're denying anything based on the ZBA legal action, that she advised not to do that, not to deny based on that because that'll play out in court. If you have other reasons to deny any of this, health, safety, things like that, then you can deny on both of these, but not based on the fact that her suggestion was, don't deny based on the fact it's currently in litigation. The developer knows that if he loses, he'll have to backtrack.
I guess I have a question because of they're viewing it as three separate variances. And right now, this public hearing that we're dealing with just deals with the apartment, which was one variance, which was the additional apartment, correct or incorrect?
Yes. And it's separated because the apartment's a special land use and the warehouse facilities are site plans.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I ask the applicant a question real quick?
Sure. Yes. Sorry, this is maybe a little unusual.
I'm okay.
So, based on what we just heard, you understand that if this were to be reverted in court, that those costs and everything would be?
100%.
I mean, you, it just...
I wasn't aware that the apartment variance was under circuit court review, so I guess that's news to me. But I'm prepared to move forward at my risk.
Okay. I was just questioning.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any more public comments?
I think I'm missing a few.
Steve, anything further before I close the public hearing? And I'm closing the public hearing on just the apartments is what I'm doing.
Yes.
Okay, so I am closing the public hearing at 7:44. All right, board members? What's wrong? Or, Steve, can we ask you a question? We're questioning some paperwork for a second. Want to pick it up?
I think this is, I have a letter on just the apartment. It says 000. So, it should be the whole one.
01.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
So, it's this number, okay.
Shouldn't have got that either. All right, any comments, board members, questions, motions, thoughts in regards to the apartments only? I spoke with Christine a few times also in regards to this whole apartment, the ZBA variances. And she basically, she basically said the same thing that Steve just reiterated tonight. It's a separate consideration and the applicant now has said that he's very well aware of this, that potentially could be involved, so...
If that's the case, we'll make a motion to recommend special land use approval for 3486 Point Tremble Road.
Should we list the residential unit number two to make it very clear? Do you have that?
Where is that?
So, that's Tom's motion.
I'll support.
You support? Any more discussion? Steve, does that sound like a clear motion? Okay. And I will go, and Sue, you okay with that? Say it one more time.
I think it's all right in here, isn't it? As long as we point to the document.
It should be okay. Okay. All right, roll call, please, we didn't get a chance.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Eltonin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling?
Yes.
Robert Jacobs is absent. And Kathy Schweckert?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is new business. Under item number six is 6A, which is a Corcat Storage Expansion, which is a site plan. So, I will have hearing.
We did the site plan review for the expansion of the mini storage operation. This includes the construction of a security fence, additional landscaping, and 11 additional storage buildings. The total proposed square footage of the 11 storage buildings will be 43,124 square feet. The applicant has attained variances for maximum lot coverage, side yard setbacks, and a second residential unit. The site plan we reviewed continued to meet the standards of the mini warehouse section of Clay Township zoning ordinance with the following exceptions. Item number two on page two, the total lot coverage of all structures shall be limited to 35% of the total lot area. This was met through the variance that allowed the property to receive, or to exceed 35% maximum lot coverage. Item number, on page number three, the following items still need to be addressed by the applicant. Item number nine, no single storage, or, I'm sorry, item number 10, I'm sorry, the third page, the fourth page. Or no, item number 11, the outdoor storage of recreational vehicles, motorized homes, and travel trailers may be permitted. All such areas shall be on aggregate treated surface or better. Such storage shall be completely screened from view from adjacent residential areas. The applicant will need to address this item and confirm that this standard will be met. And also, additional lighting will be provided mounting on the proposed structures. Fixtures are indicated to shield downward and will not exceed the height of the building. Lighting intensity needs to be confirmed that it will not exceed three-foot candles nor be below .5-foot candles. So, we basically need, the applicant needs to submit a lighting plan with cut sheets to the building, to the building department to confirm that all those things will be met.
Okay, at this point, we've not received anything in...
I have not.
You have not?
I don't know if Cindy has yet.
Okay.
But aside from the applicant being able to address and adjust those standards, we recommend approval of the site plan.
Thank you, Karen, appreciate it. I know the applicant is present. Again, please state your name.
My name is Paul Muscat. I'm the owner of Corcat Mini Storage, as you all are aware. I've prepared to meet the standards of the lighting. We're not planning on putting any poles, everything will be building mounted, so I don't feel like that's going to be a concern. We've gone through ZBA, met all of our variances. We do understand that there are a couple in appeal. I did meet with the property owner that is appealing before I came to ZBA and tried to work through this. I feel like we're doing everything and meeting everything the site plan reviews, and I'm hoping for an approval. I understand I'm moving forward at my own risk.
Appreciate that.
Any questions?
I was going to say, any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
And actually, I'm just going to say right now, too, which is a little bit maybe unusual, but I already noticed on our fire department check review list, there's a lot of comments that were made. And maybe before we ask you some questions, I see Chief Rose is here. I don't know if you would be willing to come up and explain some of the...
Can I add a couple of things to that, to interrupt you?
In regards to that?
Yeah.
Sure, go right ahead.
I did meet with, after ZBA decision, I did have a meeting with building official, Chief Rose, and the fire inspector, and Steve, to kind of review a lot of these items. And I feel like most of those items that, if not all, are on that site plan that we sent in. We did add a two-hour firewall to the two buildings that abut, miss, that parcel that's the residential parcel, and added two fire hydrants to the parcel to try to help with their concerns.
Chief, do you agree with what he just said?
I have not seen the real site plan.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, Steve, hold on. Steve was saying, go ahead, Steve.
I have not seen a revised site plan. You may be exactly right, but I haven't seen it.
Okay, has anybody else? How about we have Gary and Chief Rose come forward if you both would, please? Only because I know Cindy will be yelling at me because we can't hear what you're saying back there. I know, a little bit unusual, but I mean, we can get everybody on the same page. So, I know Steve just said he's not seen a revised site plan.
Right now.
Okay, no, but you haven't reviewed it, I get that. You just heard what the applicant said. Do either Gary and/or the chief have any comments into your concerns? Do either Gary and/or the chief have any comments into your concerns?
We did have a meeting. We did agree on those two things that he just discussed. We also agreed on direct access down the fire lanes, so there would be two gates at the north end of the complex and two at the south end.
That has been addressed on the site plan.
Off of fruit.
That, those gates off of fruit wouldn't be a general access though.
Fire owner.
Okay.
How about the firewall you were requesting?
He, we discussed that. He said that he would put a two-hour firewall on the buildings above, that are against the residential side of the property.
Okay. So those were your three concerns you had?
Yes.
Okay, and you haven't seen a revised site plan yet, did you, or did you not? You did not see a revised site plan with those included yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you. Gary?
So, yeah, we did have a meeting on the proposal, and the meeting went well, and the property owner did agree to some things, and a lot of it is fire separation, fire lanes, and making sure that chief's guys can get in there and out safely. And I think we addressed all those at that meeting.
Since we have everybody up here now, how about plenty more, board members?
I have a couple of questions.
Go right ahead.
So the site plan that we have is a revised site plan, so nobody else, nobody else saw that? The plan that we have in our packet has the firewall, fire hydrants, fire lanes, everything's on here, so if you guys didn't get that?
I did see it.
Okay. So I guess, a couple of questions I have actually are regarding some of that. You said, Paul, you said there is a gate on the south end?
Yes.
I saw two on the, on the north side, so I was just concerned with the.
This, this is a gate?
That is where it is.
My eyes aren't that good.
I know, it's small here.
On that site plan, there is a gate on the side, on that weird angle.
Okay.
Our plan was to put gravel, I can probably show you out here easier, because I can't see.
I was thinking for a fire truck, I know they're not easy to turn, so.
They're addressing that, making sure that the fire trucks could get down both fire lanes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, if there's a gate right there at that end, then that's just a straight shot, so.
That's our plan, and we were gonna put gravel with grass over it so that it didn't look like a road for people to access, and just be like a knox box or something like that for you guys to get in and out.
And then, my other concern is you show a six-inch water main coming off of the 16. That's, in my opinion, I'd do this a little bit, that's undersized, that's not gonna work.
Me as well, that will be, we'll upsize that to eight, we'll work on that when we go for engineering review.
Okay. Those are just two things that stood out to me, I don't know. Well, I can't read it on there, but I can read it when I blew it up. On here, I don't know what it is.
The residential side he's talking about?
You got full size.
This whole wall will be a two-hour firewall.
That's good, we can look at it.
The two-hour, two-hour firewall.
Thank you. You know what, I'll see her with Christine.
I'm glad, not only you're on, I'm fine, I got the PDF to work.
So here's my, Steve just seen this for the first time.
Did you say ZBA approved this already?
No.
So Steve, seeing this for the first time, do you have any comments?
Recommendations, that's like, put that fence in there.
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
I just conferred with the chief.
Yes.
And working on the site plan. I'm not gonna speak for him, but it looks like his comments were applied with.
On this complete plan we have right here today. Okay, and as far as.
The one you should have had there, an appropriate one, looks like it was dated 32 on the bottom, revisions 3223, by order?
Yeah.
So do we have some more questions?
Yeah, 3222.
So we know what the attorney says in regards to the lawsuit, her stance on it for the township. Do you understand what's going on as far as the lawsuit and your risk of moving forward?
100% I do.
Okay, in regards to this particular, especially mini storage?
I'm very, very aware of proceeding at my own risk.
I'm just going through the checklist that we get provided in our packet. Building department said approved as per ZBA. That's what you chucked off on two items, for the height and area meet, and for the the rear, front, and yard side yard setbacks. That was yours in regards to the ZBA, correct? Still, still correct? Fire department, we addressed the hydrants, water lines. Egress, egress, the gates. Firewall, correct? And all that is now included on the site plan that we have in front of us. So that's all the checklist items that we had in our packet. We understand what the ZBA did. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Our decision-making process, are we even, even taking into court action that's going on? Am we supposed to even consider that in our decision-making process here?
I guess it depends on whose point of view.
I know, I know.
We have a representative here representing the people who are, who have filed a lawsuit, making his, I'm gonna say recommendation, correct me if I wrong, that it would maybe wiser to not proceed. We have a township attorney, Christine Anderson, we all know what she said.
I know.
Her terminology, to me, is usually stay in your lane. See her doing that in court. The applicant is very well aware, the proceeding at your own risk. Would I say I'm uncomfortable around, yes, but I also understand his legal point of view, and there's gonna be a judge who's gonna figure out whether the ZBA was accurate in what they did or not.
Right. May I say?
Oh, go right ahead. You sit on the ZBA too, I don't know if you were there that day or not.
I was not. If I was the applicant, I think it would be prudent to have all my ducks in a row. So at the conclusion of the court case, you can either go forward or go forward, but at least you'll be able to hit the ground running if it gets approved. And I would probably do that myself. So that makes sense to me.
I feel like I have to start over if, whenever that case is resolved, or, you know, or I can start working.
Right, exactly.
But he's not looking, you're not looking to hold up. If you get approval tonight, you're looking at getting started on the construction right away?
No.
You're gonna wait for the court action to.
I am going to continue with my engineering. I have a long ways to go still with process of, you know, civil engineering design, underground design, and things like that, so I'm gonna continue working on all of that design as my site plan gets approved. I'm not gonna be digging holes or doing any of that until court picks a file. But I want, I'm asking for site plan approval to continue with my engineering drawings.
And if somebody can answer this question, maybe Steve? If, if we approve this site plan, knowing that it's contained with the ZBA variances, if it's not successful in, if the ZBA's decision's overturned, this site plan just goes by the way, sorry.
I'll be back.
We'll be back.
Determinated. Want to clarify one thing, did the ZBA approve it or just make recommendations?
They approved it.
They approved it.
They approved it, if I read it correctly, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but.
I have ZBA approval, they approved it.
They approved it.
Yes, they did.
This is an approval. So that's for right now.
So would the building department allow permits? I mean, if this court case took forever to resolve, would the building department allow permits to go forward and start construction even if it was in litigation?
We, we could.
Sure.
It would be the same thing, at your own risk.
Yeah, at your own risk.
And as by the advice of our township attorney.
We're basing a lot on what she's told us we could or could not do.
It was a definite maybe.
Well, and I have no idea how long it will take to get through the court system. I have no, unless you have any idea, and as far as your feel.
It'll take a few months.
That's what I was guessing.
Think it happens.
At least.
If we can't even consider really the court case, then it's ZBA approval. None of the department heads have any issues with it?
Nope.
It is a different one than we've had ever in front of us before.
Just to clarify, I will start construction, I just will wait on the rear buildings if, you know, if we do, if I do get approval and get site plan approval and go through engineering and get all that done, I would probably wanna start on buildings that don't affect that variance, if that, if that would be approved or not.
That makes sense too.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? Yeah?
Oh, no, I was talking to Mark.
Okay. Let me ask you this, Steve, is this something we could table? Since I'm seeing pretty much silence at the moment?
Well, you certainly have it right, but again, at the advice of the attorney.
Yeah.
Yep, I know.
She indicated, you could, she strongly suggested you do not deny it based on the ZBA pending court action. If you're going to deny it, have a reason that it doesn't need warnings or health, safety, and welfare, sir.
And I agree with what you just said, because I've had the same conversation with her. At this point, I don't see where we have a self, ah, health, safety, and welfare issue at this particular point. And some of the things we do say slightly. With the ZBA's variances, they've met with the site plan, everything else. You're looking at me, Chris?
Because I'm in a motion to approve, a motion to approve the site plan for Corecat Storage, revised site plan of 3723.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion in support. Any discussion? Steve, anything else you think we need added to the motion?
No.
I think you're good? All right. No discussion, any further?
Nope.
Sue, you'll, you'll say? I want to ask for a roll call, please.
Who was the second on that, Tom?
Tom.
Yep.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
No.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Eltunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schreikert.
Yes. All right. We need to stamp three of these?
Yep. Okay.
We already have three up here. It was just a minute.
Was it 10-foot?
No, we just, actually. Thank you for providing. It was a little hard to even read them. I enlarged it, I was not doing. Can you what?
Can I get a copy of that update?
If he's willing to, who's extra. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on a second. Just wait one second, we need.
Three.
We need three.
You got one?
Yeah, I had one.
You got one right there?
I got one. I think.
You don't have to sign, we're just doing the sign. Yours is not signed, we're doing three signed ones. Okay? No problem. Thank you. Okay, that one needs a signature, I'll get my pen, or something.
That's for the apartment.
Um, one's gonna, you can take that one, and we'll get the other two. Signature, so, hold on a second. No. With this, you get that one, it's a sign.
I'll keep mine the same spot.
You need to do two more, because then they need to say. A lot of paperwork.
That would narrow this down, cause a fire problem. You have to do something like that, or do two, and bring.
Okay, this is.
Now that wouldn't work, you'd have to do one in the middle.
I don't know.
Oh, these are all.
Okay. So how many is here?
I'll take that one there. One more.
Yeah.
Well, still gotta get by you guys.
This thing's under litigation, I can't say 20.
It's a special land use.
Thank you for the.
It says.
Okay.
Thanks.
Here's.
Okay, these are back and signed to you. Yes, yep. This is the apartment, yep.
Really? That was only two of these.
Okay, you can keep this one, you not have an apartment on yet. You got that one, you just need to have signatures on it.
I think we need to request a new stamp.
You wore out the stamp?
It's not in the budget.
It doesn't stamp very well.
Okay. One more.
And while we're doing all this, this one says to stamp and sign for the.
For rezoning?
Yeah.
Why are we stamping everything now?
Thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, then why do we need a stamping? Why are they?
Even the, even the special land use.
Steve, can I ask you a quick question? Because in our packet, there's something that says stamp this, the rezoning one that we just did for.
Yeah.
The doctor's office.
The guy, the managers living there.
Isn't it just?
Didn't we send that to?
Right, right.
For the rezoning on the.
Could've sent something.
I didn't think so.
What about the, the special land use we're doing? Okay.
Okay.
So halfway through, this is.
I gave you my minutes.
This is.
Okay, put them in soon. All right, moving on to item number seven, which is unfinished business. The first thing under unfinished business is 7A, which is 5981 Point Tremble, Restrooms, Pearl Beach. Steve?
The planning commission actually tabled this last time so that each department head could do more formal review. I believe that it's in your packet now, the department heads' reviews. I don't see any issue in recommending approval.
Thank you. The applicant, I think, is already bracing, right?
As a supervisor, township, sure.
As a supervisor, so I don't see him present at the moment. How about board members? Comments, questions, since we have Steve up here looking at it? Or does the building department or fire department recognize both? department or fire department recognize both of you back there? Anybody have any comments in regards to the Pearl Beach? I see no comments. Okay, I'll go back to board members on.
This approval is for the parking lot and?
And the bathroom.
Bathroom facility?
Yes.
Yes.
Two approval holes or just one?
Just a small parking area.
Just a small, little parking lot in front.
Not the whole thing.
It's the one highlighted, I don't know if you have the color copy, it's the.
I don't have the color copy.
One, two, three, four parking spaces, or three?
Why do we, why do we have the other one? The other parking area, is that not happening? The one that has the big spaces?
All I'm aware of is those other three, I don't know why you would have that.
You talking up by the water?
Yeah.
I think they're just trying to show you how it relates to everything.
So we're not approving that, we're approving the bath facility with the four parking spaces at the facility.
Yes.
Okay, it got tabled last time because the packet we thought was not complete?
Yeah.
So that's why it was tabled last time, so what do we think this time?
Well, there, all the reviews are in there, so. And a recommendation from you, right, Steve?
Yes.
So it's just the parking in front of the bathrooms, not the?
Correct.
You're only asked to approve the small parking area in front of the bathrooms in the bathroom.
Pave sites then.
Yeah.
Nothing around the.
No.
So it's, it's just basically.
The request only came in for you guys to look at the bathroom and the four parking spaces.
Nothing around.
But then we get this conceptual drawing here.
I know.
Did you get that?
Yeah, but that wasn't on the drawing that I received for review.
Again, it's not clear, but.
Okay, but shouldn't we be clear?
What we're approving?
Because right now, and I wish you was here just to ask the question, because.
Yeah, this is how we got it. It's all attached.
That's just a conceptual long range plan.
So don't even.
Yes. So should we, like, very much so?
That it is.
That's the long range plan, it's just this.
So you're saying that is really not, should it be attached to this?
Just to give you an idea of what's gonna happen.
I missed it.
Just to give you a heads up. This is where they're asking for approval.
Just that. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Sure makes sense to me.
Yes.
Mark, you're not telling.
Chris, ask your question, if you've got questions, start asking.
It's a building and three parking spots, one of them's handicap.
Well, let me ask you this, I think at our last meeting we had, you got, you educated us that they really don't have to, the township doesn't have to come to us for any of this, right?
That's correct, the state enabling legislation says the township is exempt from zoning and local approvals.
So any of the zoning, local or other, they're exempt, so.
Schools don't come before you.
Okay.
Townships and township facilities, they, it's always good practice to do it.
It's courtesy.
Obviously, that you're following your own rules.
Can I ask?
It's not required.
Okay, let me ask this question. If we approve this, because they came to us seeking our approval, what happens on the next phase?
It's up to the township board, they want to send it to you or not.
Yeah, whatever they want to do.
It's gonna happen, what do you do?
I'm gonna make the motion to approve. The site plan.
Say it again?
If we don't approve it, if we don't, if we.
Would we, do we object to it?
If we don't approve it, does the township board have to approve it, or they can just, without anything to do?
And it all meets all the ordinances.
Let's make a motion.
Kirsty?
And the most important thing is.
Let's approve it.
Yes.
Well, is there another option to?
Why wouldn't we approve it?
Let me finish, let me. It was, I appreciate them coming to us and submitting the information, but now that I have the knowledge that they could go to the next phase and not bother with anything else.
Not that they would, I mean, they could come to you.
I understand that, so it's either approve, don't approve, is there any other options, or we're just?
Yeah, receive and file and concur with their request and wish you best of luck, kind of.
Oh.
That would be my motion.
Say it again, one more time.
Concur, I mean, receive and file and concur with their request and move forward with the bathroom and parking, you can just do that, the way you're not approving, you're just agreeing that you don't have a problem.
Okay.
You okay with it?
Yep.
All right.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Sure, a motion to concur with their recommendation, receive and file.
Okay, go ahead.
And a motion?
Motion two.
To concur with their recommendation for the Pearl Beach Park restroom facility?
And small parking.
And parking.
Small parking.
Small parking. Receive and file.
It's your motion.
That's my motion.
How you doing there, Bob?
I'm doing good.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
WA has a second. Sue, you got the motion, any further discussions?
What was it, it was, what, and file?
Receive and file.
When you're ready, could we have a roll call, please?
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Can you read the motion, please?
Sure.
Concur with site plan of Pearl Beach restroom facility and small parking and received and filed.
Thank you.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Christopher Daggy.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweckert.
Yes, thank you very much, township can do their thing. Thanks for your help, Steve.
You're welcome.
Item seven B under unfinished business would be zoning ordinance text amendment noise ordinance.
Now, do we have to stamp this? No.
No.
We don't, because it's received and filed.
Yeah, first of all, it's incorrectly written on the agenda, it is a noise ordinance, it's not a zoning ordinance amendment, it is a general ordinance of the township, police power type ordinance, it does not follow the zoning ordinance guidelines, public hearings and notifications, and it's an ordinance that is adopted solely by the township board. But what, what the planning commission had requested is that they worked to develop this noise ordinance to suggest it to, forward it to the township board for their consideration. And we worked over the last several months to come up with some ideas that we thought were, could be sound and, you know, that the board could consider. I did receive a call from the township supervisor, along with the police chief, a few days ago, and also met with the police chief and the township supervisor. The police chief is not in favor of this ordinance, he thinks it takes too much authority away from an officer, discretion away from an officer with dealing with the situation as they see fit, as they arrive. He's also concerned that the decibel, a specific decibel reading of whatever it might be, can easily be exceeded just by talking at times, and it's very tough to quantify. His third concern, and there were others that I don't want to speak totally for him, but his third concern is that this would be handled by ordinance, of course, instead of the police department, and that would be an issue. And, I'm sorry, and then there is a fourth concern, that it's very difficult for his police officers to be trained in noise monitoring, and that noise monitoring constantly fluctuates. I told him I would provide you with his comments, and he also knows that the final authority of this rests with the township board, too, so I'm sure he'll be making his comments to the township board, if and when you send it.
We also have in our packet, I believe it's in regards to this, the noise ordinance, a letter from a Mark McEllen. And, did everybody review this one? Everybody received it, okay. We made a couple comments in regards to, oh, number one in section A, it states, quote, "Such noise levels shall be measured on the line or on the adjacent property which is receiving the noise." His suggestion was this should be changed to, quote, "measured on the property line." He has said something else in regards to on the rocks, but this is just, is a general ordinance, I'm gonna read that. The other one is, um. Maintaining sound levels, all entities in the township have an equal responsibility to maintain the, quote, livability of the neighborhood if a business is next to a residence, and it's only common sense that the decibel level should be the same resident to resident, and business to resident, so that was his input. So we have our proposed draft or noise ordinance, it would only be a recommendation to the township board and make them do what they want, right? Any comments, discussion in regards to what we now have in front of us as far as the clay township noise ordinance draft?
In your meeting, Steve, with the township supervisor and police chief, did they have any recommendations or suggestions, or they just didn't like?
They didn't have any suggestions to change this ordinance, but I, I got the impression, again, I don't want to speak for the police chief.
Sure.
But I got the impression that he was comfortable with what we had now, which allowed his, you know, a phone call to be made to the police department, and they could come out and determine the appropriateness of the allegation.
Okay.
Way back when, we looked at what we had, and we're wondering if maybe we should tweak it, just because it seemed a little general. Obviously, this is why we have these discussions, and we have a noise ordinance placed right now. Potentially, we could send it to the board, they could do what they want, or we can leave it as is. Boxed discussions, go ahead.
The police weren't going to be enforcing this, the noise ordinance, but I thought there was some discussion a while back, you know, they pulled all the police records, and they're not actually, that wasn't part of their duty to do that, I don't know.
Explain to me that he felt it was his officer's responsibility.
So they are, so when someone does a call, they make a report.
Based on a call, you know, complaint.
And how do they, do they actually determine or quantify the sound, or is it a cover level, or it's just that officer's opinion as to what's too loud?
It's my understanding, it was their officer's discretion.
Discretion.
So, Steve, what have you seen in regards to noise ordinances in other communities?
It varies, there are some like you have now, that it's up to, and there are others that have similar ordinances to this, it's just half a dozen, you know, different ways, yeah. It varies.
So the reason.
I was gonna say, Steve did provide us a while ago about the Baltours and Harrison Townships.
Yep.
I think were the two that he provided. Go ahead.
So the reason that we, we were looking at some sort of noise ordinance was so that we could be.
Consistent.
Consistent with every business that, that we were talking to, if, I mean, if some of the township officials are okay with the way it was, I mean, it just seems like that was the main reason we were doing this, is so that we, we had, we could recommend something to them so that they could have consistency for enforcement, but if they're not looking for that, then why feed it to them?
Some of them may be, I only hear, you know.
I guess, I mean, so at that point, we could recommend this to the township board and let them make the decision, because that is their decision to make, so.
That's kind of where I'm leaning towards.
We kind of.
They know what's in place now. Steve, and whoever else in his office spent the time and energy with us to go through and give them this new draft, if the board doesn't want to do it, they can keep doing with what they've got.
That's a proper way to proceed.
Okay.
And the whole purpose that we are working with, on this, is so we could possibly have situations with, on the rocks, that would be solved, to some extent, with this.
Well, we might just have to move forward.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with your thought process, absolutely, but at this point, I think we've potentially done the best we could with all, like, the totality of the picture that's going on for us, and we can make a recommendation, and then it's up to the board of trustees to do what they want, if that's the direction we want to go, or we just leave it alone and.
Well, I seen on the, like, the, for that coffee shop.
Yeah.
One of the recommendations was, you know, the decibels at the property line, you know, doesn't that pretty much cover it, everything right there?
With that particular one.
You could almost do it in a sentence.
For that, for that one.
For that one, it does.
There's nothing else out there.
Anything, right, I mean, any noise is gonna be at the border, at the property line.
I don't know.
I guess you can put anything in here, you can make it.
Yeah.
It's totally unenforceable, the way I look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, who's gonna do the enforcement? The police department isn't going to do it, they don't have decimal meters to carry with them, nor are they trained in decimal training, and, so, yeah, this, you know, I'm okay with it going before the board, but, you know, we're gonna have the same discussion up there.
Yeah.
We've had here.
Well, you guys can discuss, but if we can almost think of stuff, but, and if that, we know where we're at.
So what is the answer, going forward with restaurants that want to have outside, what is the answer? I mean, we put restrictions on the site plan, decibel levels and ways of monitoring it, or don't even worry about the noise?
Well, at that point, it goes to enforcement, the enforcement would still go to some sort of municipal aspect of it, and it goes right to where Mark's saying, they're not trained in doing it, so how is it ever enforced? No matter what restrictions we put on the site plan, or anything, how is it ever enforced?
Their own discretion.
I, that was, some of the questions I had for it, too, is how is it gonna be enforced with a code, with an code officer or the police, and who's trained and would stand up in court?
Any other discussions? Comments? Motion? And part of this, go ahead.
Make a motion to table it.
I'm not sure. Okay, go ahead. To table it?
Yeah.
Is there anybody?
Nope. I'm not sure on that one, but, well, we have a motion for tabling.
What does that do for us?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Just puts it aside?
Doesn't do.
Call back at any time we want to.
Is that us?
Is that, if we table it, we can bring it back anytime?
You can, if you postpone to a certain date, but you can table it and bring it back anytime, doesn't have to be the next meeting.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion to table the noise draft ordinance, and we have a second by Debbie Addy, any discussion? Sue, on the same page? Robert, when you're ready, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin?
No.
Christine Holcomb?
No.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling, no, and Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweckert?
No.
And so that's one, two, three, four, and one, two, three, four.
What happens with the tie?
Show hands.
Got coin?
You can create, if somebody wants to come forth with another motion, you can, if not, it just dies to the next meeting.
Yeah, I would have to.
A motion that we move this to the township board and let them make their decision.
Second.
Any discussion? There are no discussion, Robert, when you're ready, Sue, do you have the motion, roll call, please?
Who was the second on that?
That was me.
Deborah Addy?
No.
Mark Bouchard?
No.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hultunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes. Robert Jacobs is absent, and Kathy Schweckert?
Yes.
Motion is approved, is going to the board, yes.
Going to the board, okay. Board members have fun. Board members, have fun. All right, thank you, everyone, on that one. Let's move on to seven C, which is On the Rocks, located in 7479 Dyke Road. We have already had a public hearing on this that was conducted back on August 31st of 2022. I double-checked with our paperwork with the township. Um, so I'm gonna just start with you, Steve. Do you have something to say?
You, based on that conversation ahead of the township agreement-
Okay.
And she is concerned that this has taken so long to take action, understands that the, we were waiting on a noise ordinance, but also understands in the noise ordinance that most of the township board may not even be considered or wasn't considered for three, won't be considered for several months. The applicant is under, is, has the right to a speedy decision. They are, you are, the season is coming-
Yep.
-coming forth soon. She's suggesting that you make a decision on this, one way or the other. And remember, the request was that they had a special land use approval that limited their hours until eight o'clock at night, and they're asking to be allowed to stay open till 10 o'clock at night.
And outside entertainment.
Outside till 10 o'clock, yeah, and outside entertainment.
Because they never had outside entertainment before. So there's two different things.
So are the hours that they're asking to extend, those were for the exterior-
Outdoor.
Outdoor, well, for the outdoor operations of the bar?
I'm not certain. It might be a quest, you know, I don't know if you need to make a decision tonight, but you could probably ask the applicant to come in next month to make a decision.
But what I'm saying is their request was for the extended, extending of the hours was for their outdoor portion, not indoors.
That's correct.
Yes.
Doesn't he get, like, three or something special permits or something to stay open later?
Four.
Four?
Yeah. I don't know if he stays later or not, but on the weekends, outdoor.
Can we determine those permits weren't valid, though, because it didn't lead to site plans, so those permits weren't supposed to be issued?
No.
That's what the attorney said.
Is that how?
That's another issue.
Okay.
Let's stick to the one we got right now.
Well, they're issued by the state and then we have the, Mr. Pellitt has the option of either accepting or not accepting.
But it's a special land use. Help me out here. I've talked to the attorney too and I know Steve-
Special land use takes precedent.
Yes, it does.
They agree.
Yes.
Special land use takes precedent, therefore what the other groups are doing, really, is it supposed to be happening, I guess?
The only thing that you, their only recourse is to ask you guys to change their agreement.
In this, the way this is written, he can, this is seven days a week?
Yep. That was the concern.
It doesn't say-
Seven days a week? No, it doesn't.
It doesn't state any days, it's just hours.
It just states hours, it doesn't state days.
I can agree with some of it. It was like Friday, Saturday or something.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Hold on one second.
Go ahead.
Is the applicant here for On the Rocks? Anybody here to represent On the Rocks? I see no one raising their hand or coming forward. Okay, go back to what your question was.
I, I think it's a little, what he's asking for is a little wide, too wide open here. It's seven days is what I see. I would see, you know, Friday, Saturday, maybe.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
And then, like, maybe, you know, Memorial Weekend till-
Yes, till Labor Day.
Till Labor Day, and that's, that'd be it, you know, not during school.
Yep. And this is a special land use, so we have the, the, we have power-
But I don't see any of that.
-authority to do what he just said.
But we can-
We can stipulate that?
Yeah.
He had mentioned, when he was here, that it was only going to be certain days and hours, and I think at that time, we had asked him to narrow it down, bring back what he was actually asking for.
We could narrow it down for them. We could. Actually, now that Christine has pointed this out, the Clay Township application has site plan consideration checked and not special land approval use.
Yep. It says it on here, too. And there's an attachment signed by the applicant that says, "I hereby acknowledge I have received the following information in regards to special approval land use and site plan consideration I don't know if that's a generic that they, everybody gets.
My understanding is we're just dealing with a special land use approval extending of hours or however else we wanted to.
Yes, the site plan stuff's all attached.
But yeah, all the site plan stuff is attached.
Yep.
So clarification-
Firewater, please.
Okay. Maybe attached, but we're not dealing with that because the request was for special land use approval labeled extended hours. And yes, we've had discussions with the applicant about potentially eliminating the days and hours and weeks, and I remember at one point, he came back and I think he, after consultation with his whomever, just was gonna leave it blank, how he wanted it. So we can do what he asks, or we can make modifications, correct, Steve?
Yeah.
So.
Well, this looks like, you know, seven days a week year round. I'm not gonna go for that.
Uh, wait, hold on, Chris Daggy had a question.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I know where they're at time crunching. It sure seems like the applicant should kind of, you know, for certain hours, maybe things work better for him, certain days, if we say something, and it's like, sure be nice to get his input before we make a motion.
I would agree, we should table, you know, I would suggest you table this until, and we notify him to be here, ask him to be here.
Yeah.
That seems like a better course of action to me.
Instead of taking, making decisions that he may not even agree with anyways.
Right.
Was he, I don't think he got personal notification, but you could see on the website it was back on, correct?
He probably, I mean, I would have thought, okay, we're still doing the noise ordinance, so why not?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
True.
Can we reach out to him then? If we table it, we'll just reach out to him and let him know that we'll have it on for next.
Our next meeting will be April 26th.
Yeah, it has to be then.
Oh, absolutely, has to be then. One way or the other, we make a decision, how's that, so what we can do.
Yep.
Or he can meet with Steve or something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he can meet. Has he, has he reached out to you? No?
I had to reach out to him.
Would you mind?
Do that.
That would be great. Could you please reach out to him, let him know what has happened and where we're at? And if he's questioning about the noise ordinance, you can let him know that went to the township board. How's that sound? So I suppose we need a motion, then.
Motion to table.
So we have W. Eddy and Chris Daggy to table. So you mentioned in the motion that we're tabling it to the 4/26 date, so it's very clear. Would you mind amending your motion?
I will motion it to table it till 4/26, 2023.
That's support again. Any further discussion? Hearing none, when you get a chance, roll call, please.
Who was the second on that?
Um, Chris Daggy.
Deborah Eddy?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Christopher Daggy?
Yes.
Chris Hiltunin?
Yes.
Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Musling, yes. Bob Jacobs is absent. And Kathy Schweickart?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to item number eight, which is planning consultant report.
Planning consultant report.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for all your help and everything. This has been a little busy, Monch. Number nine, ZBA representatives' report. W. Eddy.
Okay, there was a meeting February 15th, and it was a big meeting because an attorney came and he wanted clarification on section 3.01-9, subparagraph 13 of the zoning ordinance. And basically, it was about pole barns and the use of pole barns on properties. So I thought I'd do is read the motion to you, so it makes it really clear. There was a motion by Matt Conerny, second by Shemansky, that the ZBA interpret the zoning ordinance, section 3.10, I'm sorry, 3.01.09, that the owner of the, of a property over two acres can build a pole barn as permitted, as permitted use and clearly allowable. The issue is the seasonal storage of boats in a residential district allowing for the charge of rent and storage within the pole barn, which makes it a commercial or industrial use. It, it is the opinion that what was written in the ordinance for storage on residential property is intended for the storage of the homeowner boats and not being charged as a business. What the petitioner is asking to do is turning it into a business which is not acceptable accessory use in residential property. So that was clarified for these folks, and they may go to circuit court about that.
Anything further?
That was it.
That was it?
That was it.
That was a big one.
Yeah.
There you go.
It was huge, look at this.
Yeah.
Gary, we got the ZBA meeting, do you have anything you want to add or?
To that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just a, a business owner that operates in an R1 district. He's in a non-conforming use, and he owns the property next to it and wants to build a 6,000-square-foot accessory structure on that property. There is a house on that property, so there's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits him from building a 6,000-square-foot building because he's over two acres, but it was his use that, that was really at question. And so he wanted to use that barn for his use on the commercial property, which is expanding in non-conformity, which is strike one. And strike two, it's in residential, so we don't want to expand upon and have businesses running out of, businesses of that magnitude running out of residential properties.
Hey, you could update information.
Right, right.
All right, I'm gonna move on to 10, board representative report. Mark?
I have nothing.
You was quiet at the board meeting, huh? All right. Item number 11 is chairperson's report. It's been kind of hectic with trying to talk to attorneys, the attorney and Steve. I really appreciate both their help in trying to get, work through questions in regards to numerous items that have come before us, for sure, zoning, or that's only the noise ordinance and rezoning and things of that sort. I also want to recognize our chief of the fire departments here. Thank you very much for your input and being willing to show up and answer any questions we had on any of these items on our agenda today. Same thing with Gary. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And for all the hard work everybody else has done on this board, trying to get through this massive amount of paperwork at times. So, number 12 would be planning commission members' comments. Everybody talked out?
Pretty much.
Everybody want to go home? Sorry. Item number 13 is public comments. Anybody who wishes to make a public comment, please come to the podium. Remember the rules as far as time limits, because we're gonna adhere to them tonight for sure. And state your name and address, please.
Mark McLean, 7869 Inglewood.
Just a couple of comments about On the Rocks. First, was a sound study ever ordered for them or required? Only for Blue Cabana, not for them? Okay.
They didn't have entertainment. They have no outside entertainment, and the sound study we did for the, oh, boy, the- Blue Cabana.
But you did Blue Cabana, but not On the Rocks?
No.
Okay, cool. Okay, next, March 17th, they had a, a big to-do. Here's some pictures. Number one, this is Vince, this is Mr. Stewart's famous boat.
This is this year?
This is last week.
Last week.
Okay, this is their tent. Notice how the door to the tent faces right to his house, shooting all the music right towards him. And then here, take a look here, this is St. Patty's Day, all the crowd walking in and out 50 feet from his home. They could have easily put the door on the other end. Next, the tent is adjacent, right across the canal from Vince's house. They got another 150 feet further towards the water, they could move it, but apparently it's not worth their time to take care of the needs of the neighbors. All they want to do is aggravate him and make his home unlivable. Next, a police officer was called on the 17th. I was there. I saw the officer come down the road. It was nine o'clock at night. Their music was blaring. The officer came into Vince's home, then he left, came around, told him to turn the music down. Now, my question to you is this, if your existing permit for him requires him to shut his music off at eight o'clock, and he has it at nine, he is, he is showing utter disrespect for your permit process. What is he gonna do to us when you grant him 10 o'clock? Okay, a person that does their own thing, does their own thing, and you need to control those people. Okay, if you look at the pictures, do you see any acoustic barriers? Do you see any effort to make his life more livable or his wife's life? Why you gotta just put up barriers? Okay, now, the, the whole care to this is simple. It's called doing others as you would doing to them. Okay, move that second tent down, okay, turn the music down. That's simple. Now, as far as your noise ordinance goes, and the chief of police saying it takes high training to get these people trained in acoustics, there's an app for your phone. Boom, I could have any 12-year-old show you how to measure it. You get two officers, two phones, you average the difference, you say, hey, you're too loud. You prove with your phone that it's any different. Boom, that's done. Without an ordinance, there's no teeth in the law. And then, the other thing with the ordinance is the thing I-
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm gonna keep you to the three minutes, Mark, so you're gonna have to wrap it up, okay?
Oh, sure, sure.
Thank you.
I'll wrap it up. As far as the noise ordinance goes, the thing is, measure on their property, okay? Why? The last thing you want to do is have Off the Rocks come over to Mr. Stewart's property and measure sound there. That's a good way to get someone killed. You can get an alcoholic-inspired fight real easy, and we don't want that. Measure it at their property line, and that's the way it needs to be. Anyway, so what I see here is simple disregard for the neighbors. I'm a business owner on the street, okay? I have a vacation rental. I had a decrease in income last year. Why? I value the neighbors. Okay, what have I done? I've taken my house from 16 people-
I want to stop you now because we're now at four minutes, and everything you are saying now, we've heard before, and we really do hear you. We heard you before.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you so much, I appreciate it. Do you want your pictures, or you want us to keep?
Please keep them and look.
Okay. Any other public comments? Please come forward, state your name.
You did get busy there that day, they were parked out on M. 29.
Were you there?
I just drove by.
So my name is Brian Klingenberg, 90032 Field Road, and I'm not sure if I'm in front of the right group, but I have issues with 3480 Fruit Street, Algonquin Sand and Supply. I have pretty much the same issues, total disregard for the neighbors. I have pretty much the same issues, total disregard for the neighbors, for me, my wife. Um, they work past their zoned hours, their property, every, everything in the property hasn't been inspected in a long time, so their berms aren't proper. The depths of, uh, the pits they're digging, the slopes of the pits.
And the location you're talking about again is?
Algonquin, um, Sand and Supply, which is thirty-four eighty Fruit Street. So I've made several complaints to the police department with actually no results as of yet. To, um, the code enforcement officer, for the past two years I've been complaining about this with no results, so. I don't know if this is the group, if I need to go to city council.
Go to the board of trustees. We have no enforcement here.
Okay.
No, but we appreciate you showing up and waiting however long you have waited, so, um.
I just want to follow the proper avenue to get this kind of resolved and taken care of. You know, we all got to live together and I got to live next to this guy, so.
You, you're welcome to come to the board during the public hearing, uh, comment area and address your concerns there. And we meet the.
Do I have to fill out an application for?
No, just come in and.
Do you have the date of that?
Pardon?
The date of that meeting?
Uh, it's the first Monday of the month and the third Monday of the month.
Six o'clock.
Six, six P.M.
And public comments are like right at the beginning.
Yep.
Oh, perfect.
Be on time.
Give it and I'll get out.
That's all, yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Yes. Um, anybody else, public comments? Please come forward, state your name. I'm sorry. We're going to try, you know what, three minutes, I give you the warning and you get to four, then we're done.
No, I'm downstairs. I live across the street from the bar. I just have a question. You're talking about the seventy-five decibels. Have you guys ever experienced seventy-five decibels at forty feet? Maybe you should. It might be a good idea before you make a decision. Especially with our house, they were seventy-five at our lot line and it was like sixty-five or sixty-seven in the house and the police came and he couldn't believe how loud it was and he had him turn it down last weekend, so.
Okay.
Your ordinance is, that one's just full of shit. It's not going to help. You're just going to create more problems and like you said, you're ruining our house allowing these people. And you saw the picture, he, he made that comment a couple of times in prior meetings that he aimed the window out to the lake and all this and he doesn't make the sound go to our house, which he does constantly. He goes out of his way to aim it to the house. So you, if you give him ten o'clock, you're going to have problems. I'm going to turn my radio up as loud as his every time and we're going to have an issue. I've already done it a couple of times because no one does anything about this. And it seems like I'm the only one that could fight my own battle over there. You guys are supposed to be taking care of them.
Thank you so much. Anybody else in the public who would like to come forward and state their name and address?
Hello, Cindy Valentine. My address is thirty-five twenty-three Fruit Road. Um, I'm up here with regards to the Core Cap Mini Storage. Although the ZB A approved the variance, um, this board still needed to approve the site plan. So I found it a little concerning that there is no public hearing. There was no avenue for public comments beforehand to enable me to express my concerns. Um, I thought it was fabulous that Mr. Muscat is putting in a two-hour firewall. However, um, my building doesn't have a two-hour firewall and, uh, there is now no fire access to the rear of my house with that variance that they granted with his building there. So, um, it is being appealed in circuit court, but I think that this board should have at least been aware of that factor, that there is a concern there. So that's all I have.
We don't set public hearings for site plan?
No, but my, my issue was I didn't have an avenue for public comments. There wasn't a public hearing that you could give a public comment. Public comments are at the end of the agenda, which, like you commented, the board is at the beginning of the meeting and that's kind of why we moved them to the beginning of the meeting. So people beforehand would have the opportunity to speak and be able to comment on things on our agenda.
Understood. Thanks. Thank you. Any more public comments? One more time? I see no one raising their hand or coming forward. So item number fourteen is adjournment.
Support.
Got a motion to support? No one favor?
Hi.
All pros? Thank you very much.